So is he saying yes to that? I'll take it.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think so.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us at tonight's planning board meeting, Town and Deli Planning Board meeting for June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Presented this evening, we have Mr. Richard Clark, Vice Chairman, Steve Waitrowa, Clerk of the Board, Thomas Chinaki, Member, Mr. Scanlon, our Town Planner, myself, Guy Horn, Chairman. First order on our agenda this evening, approval of minutes from May twenty-fifth and June eighth. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at the minutes from May twenty-fifth and June eighth? Or somebody left it?
We don't have the June eighth minutes prepared yet.
We don't have them yet. Okay.
Yes, but we do have the May twenty-fifth.
Oh, you have the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept the meeting minutes for May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two as presented.
We have a motion for the May twenty-fifth meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? If we can get two copies of that set around, that would be great. We've got one here.
I got one started here.
Okay, next item on our agenda, we've got two A and R plans, Shelley Norbert, forty-five Northwest Schoolhouse Road, and Corner Land Trust LLC, forty-two Mill Street. Bill, were there anybody gonna come in for the A and R plans, or do you just have them?
Um, we have Jeremy Croto on the phone for the second plan on the agenda.
Okay.
The first plan you reviewed the last meeting, and there was a question about were taxes paid?
Oh.
And I've got a confirmation from the Treasurer that they have been paid, and I do have a tax
Okay.
form here saying that they were, they were paid, so I think that was the only question.
Okay.
It appeared to meet your standards for approval.
Did we, uh, did we approve it pending that, or?
We just, we just, uh, I think we ta- I think we made a motion to table it or something.
Oh, okay, all right, so we need to vote on that.
Yeah, we, we need to vote on it.
Do we need to see it again, or does everybody remember?
I believe that was the only question that we had.
I think so.
When we got to that meeting. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the A and R plan, Shelley Norbert, forty-five Northwest Schoolhouse Road.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I abstain, because I wasn't here?
That's fine. So it's three to, three to one, one abstention. Mr. Chinaki wasn't here. The next one is the Corner Land Trust LLC.
Yeah, you need to sign that plan.
Oh, yes.
We will?
You need to sign the plan.
Right.
Sure.
Okay.
You have to ask nicely.
Can't have a black pen.
This show's getting worse.
Mr. Bell, else we have to say? Is there anything she thinks?
Um. Just two.
Just two.
I followed guys.
On this one, there are in this one.
Two, two copies. Two copies of paper, one of my line. Okay, so we can move on to the next A and R plan. It's, uh, Corner Land Trust LLC, forty-two Mill Street.
Jeremy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Do you want to, uh, describe that plan for us?
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, essentially what, what we're doing is creating lot A, B out of, uh, with Corner Land Trust. Essentially, the reason for that is the house number forty-two that's sold and the garage that goes with it was actually on the abutting property on Corner Land Trust. So we're just creating a lot so the garage can go with the house. Um, the garage, we did take form for the side step backs, the ten feet, we made it twelve point six and eleven point nine. So essentially what we're doing, we're just, uh, trading the lot so that garage can go with the house, which is what it was meant to do.
We're just looking at the plan for a moment. So how will you combine those two parcels? Will there be a deed that will create one parcel?
Um, well, now essentially what's gonna happen, they are the Labuff already bought number forty-two, so basically when I, you guys sign the plan, they'll transfer lot A in Labuff's name over, you know, to lot forty-two. So there won't be a deed that would combine them.
Okay.
Essentially, there'll be two deeds under his name for that, you know, that he owns those two parcels.
Okay.
And then, I mean, this plan basically kind of spells out that they're to be combined and conveyed. Um, so the remaining land of Corner Land Trust is not a separate building lot also.
Yep.
And what's the proposed use for that parcel?
What's that?
What's the proposed use for that remaining land?
Uh, it's all woods right now. There is, there is no use. It's not even a building lot. So he, he combines it with other land that he owns there, through the road. So he'd have to go back before you guys, before he could do anything with that anyway.
So.
To make it a buildable lot, I should say.
So that, that, uh, lot next to that remaining land on, has frontage on Spruce Street, that's a paper street, correct?
Uh, yes, yep.
So that's not a buildable lot either?
No, no, none of that would be buildable, so like, the, the road is improved, or he'd have to go back before the planning board in town anyway.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, he, he owns several properties in there, so it's there, he, there's a bunch of different ways he can combine that, you know, so essentially, we're just trying to get the garage over to the house of number forty-two to make that clean.
Okay.
So Jeremy, this, this lot B, would it be combined with the lot to the right of it, the other Corner Land Trust lot?
Uh, well, he owns that, yeah. I mean, essentially it's on the same deed, whether he sells that to Labuff later, you know, he could sell that three years down the road to Labuff also, so that's kind of why we kept it that way. You know? He could sell that whole parcel. If he owns, there's like five, six, seven lots in there. They're all on that paper road. They're all fifty by a hundred and twenty-four.
Is Spruce Street the paper road?
Yes, Spruce Street's a paper street. There is houses on the other end.
Yeah, I remember.
But it's basically a paper street on that end also.
Okay. So, um, what's the zoning in here? It's rez ten?
Yep.
Yeah, this is the driveway for this house. I remember this.
Yeah, there's a driveway going up Spruce Street that goes to the house number forty's, and then it goes up to house number forty-two. And it, basically, it stops right at the house, the garage at house number forty's.
Yeah, how are you guys handling the fact that part of the driveway for number forty-two is still on that lot B?
I'm not sure how they're gonna handle that. Maybe give an amnishment for the, the driveway, the pavement area. That I, honestly, I don't know. They, they didn't want to deal with that right now. They just wanted to give them the, give them the garage, because right now the house doesn't even own the garage, so they're gonna.
Okay. What's the access to the garage, Jeremy? Is it over Spruce Street, or is it over Mill Street?
Uh, Spruce Street, and it loops around the house back onto Mill Street. It's kind of like a U-shaped driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, driveway's on your property. How is this an A and R if this is not an approved road? If this is not an accepted public way, how is this an A and R?
Well, we're not creating any new building lots. They're just combining the parcel with the garage to lot, uh, forty-two.
Yeah.
And, and lot forty-two includes those four dotted, those four dotted lines since, that I see inside of there? Where, where house forty-two is? There's, there's like, looks like there's four lots.
Yeah, look, yeah, so the dash line to the driveway, and then there's one dash line running north-south. That was, that's, there's two, he owns two lots, Larry Buff, there would be lots, uh, I think it's ninety-nine and a hundred.
Oh, so the house actually straddles two house, two lots.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
There, that's what it is. That, there is a whole block, and it's, and there's, you know,
It's got plenty of frontage on there.
You know, fifteen, fif- you know, fifty by a hundred and twenty-four lots going down Spruce Street, but Spruce Street was never built.
Okay. They're not creating a non-conformance. There's plenty of frontage on, on, on Mill Street.
Correct.
Yeah, provided this gets conveyed to this.
Right. And that, and that's what the intention is, isn't it? Say, spell out in the notes somewheres?
The garage is getting to number forty-two.
Yeah, yeah.
Combine it to forty-two Mill Street. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we're making the situation better now. I mean, the garage right now is not even, he doesn't even really have access to somebody that, you know, over somebody else's driveway.
What's the total lot size of, of forty-two right now, the two lots that are there?
Uh, I don't know.
Does garage meet the setbacks?
I mean, a hundred and twenty-four by ninety-five point eight. I mean, I'm not really changing that lot. We're just adding land to that lot, so you're just making it more conforming if anything.
All right, so it should be, it should be ten thousand square feet, I would say at least.
It's at least, yes.
And we're gonna give it another eighteen hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Okay. I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it either.
Okay. All right, somebody like to make a motion to approve the, uh, A and R plan?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Corner Land Trust LLC, forty-two Mill Street A and R as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll make a motion in a second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Thank you, Jeremy.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks.
Jeremy? That's okay.
Hello? Hi, Jeremy. Uh, Dylan has a question for you.
Jeremy, are you gonna come over and pick up the mile out tomorrow, or leave her this week?
Yeah, uh, probably I'll pick it up Monday, if that's okay.
Okay, you can, uh, you can see two in the conservation office.
Okay, yeah, same place I dropped it off.
Uh, yes, third floor, right.
All right, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that takes us number three on our agenda for this evening, planning board reorganization and sign registry of deeds signature form.
So as you know, we just had the election.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have four members with us tonight. Uh, we can reorganize that as elect a new chairman and vice chairman.
Hannah Clark?
Excuse me?
Hannah Clark of the board.
Yep. Hannah Clark, you're correct.
Okay.
And then there's a form to sign for the registry of deeds. That has your signature, uh, for a, who knows who's authorized to sign A and R plans and such.
So once we, um, okay, so, yeah, I mean, we don't really know who the fifth person of the planning board's gonna be right now, so we have to wait until that happens, and then.
Call him to you. Huh? David's your brother-in-law, right?
Yep.
Have you heard anything from him? What is?
Yeah, he was waiting to be sworn in, I guess.
Okay.
So you think he'll accept the, uh?
I think he already did. He's just waiting to
He did, okay. Okay.
Get sworn in, I guess.
So then if you want to wait till the next meeting?
That should be an issue. The, uh, town clerk's office is open during the week.
So we could, we could just wait till the next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yeah. Do you want us to sign that now, or not?
No, I'll, I can, uh, put his name on it. I don't, I don't have his name in the fifth spot yet, so.
Okay.
Well, we'll, we'll wait for confirmation from the town clerk that he's newly sworn in, and we can go forward with that.
That sounds good.
Okay. All right, so next on the agenda, we've got standard business. Number one, discussion status report on finishing construction of, uh, accepted in acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpon Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Tobin Farm Estates, and Lion Estates. So.
Mr. Chairman, we have Tony Secura with us this evening on Pierpon Estates.
Okay.
In your binder, uh, in tab E, I received today the completion estimate for the final fees of Pierpon Estates, uh, prepared by Jeff Wallace from Graves Engineering. He's estimating the cost to bring that road up to town standard is a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So that would be the amount of security we would request from the developer to cover the cost of finishing that road. And then at that point, uh, he would be looking for lot releases so that he can pull building permits for those remaining house lots.
And how many, how many lots do you have left there, Tony?
Good evening. Um, nine lots.
Nine lots.
Yeah. So I, I have a question. Um, I went over the bill with, um, with myself. Uh, and, um, we have like seventeen thousand dollars for the berm. And, um, they, the, uh, Marrell's supposed to start that berm around noon time, and he only started around two-thirty. So, uh, he said he'll be done with the berm around nine-thirty, ten o'clock. So, um.
Tonight?
Tomorrow.
Oh.
Not tonight, tomorrow. Yeah, they'll be there seven o'clock in the morning, and he said by nine-thirty, ten o'clock, they'll be done. So I'd like to see if we can, um, reduce the bond to one oh six, first to one twenty-three. Um, we can ask, I can call Jeff, see if he can send somebody over there, probably around ten o'clock, just confirm. And, um, so I don't have to write a check for the next seventeen thousand dollars or.
We don't, we don't meet, we don't meet for the next meeting this, this month, right? We're not, our next meeting?
This is the, the second meeting of the month.
This is the second meeting of this month.
So we will meet the first, the first meeting, well, the second Wednesday, July is our next meeting.
The thirteenth.
Yes.
And then.
July thirteenth, and then we have a, then we skip a meeting.
Correct.
So the twenty-seventh's gone.
So what he's asking, on Jeff's estimate, he has seventeen thousand dollars for Cape Cod berm. And so Tony's asking to remove this item from this subtotal to get down to one oh six, and it's the amount of security. So it's up to you whether you want to accept that the berm will be completed.
As, as long as somebody, as long as somebody from Graves goes out and inspects and says the berms are in, and that's where they're supposed to be, and it's what they're, what they're supposed to be.
And they're done correctly, then. What if something happens and they don't do it tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean.
They already started. They, they did about four hundred feet.
What if they don't finish tomorrow?
Said it'll take about two hours to do, so I don't know. Um.
I'm not crazy about it.
Yeah, I'm not crazy about it either.
No, but what I'm saying is we, I mean, do you need the, do you need the lot releases tonight? Can you wait till the next meeting, two weeks from now?
I'm already late, because, you know, I have a issue with, um, with the, um, zone changing.
He's got variances from the zoning board of appeals that expire unless he can pull building permits.
When do they expire?
Supposed to be the first month, I think.
I'm not sure, Steve. It's, they're good for one year from the date they're granted, and he can get a six-month extension. So he's still within that window.
But I have to come back, and that will cost me another three months, and that'll kill me. But even though, if, if it cannot be done, it cannot be done, so, um, we just stay with the.
The other, the other option is to, uh, go with the one twenty-three as presented, and then he could come back for a reduction at a later meeting.
Once, once it's done?
We can do that.
See, the only problem I have with that is that it's really easy to, uh, for the town to take the money in, but it's not easy to get it out. I mean, last time I waited like five, 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 six weeks for my friend downstairs to, um, give me the money.
Uh, I'm not sure that there's much that we could do about that, Mr. Chairman. That's kind of beyond us.
It sounds, it sounds like from the, you know, the straw poll of the board, that, that's what they'd be willing to do. I mean, we can, if, if you want to do it tonight, we'll, you know, and you can write the check for the one twenty, one twenty-three, then if you get the paving, that, the berms done tomorrow, and Graves goes out and inspects it and sends us a note that says it's okay, then we, we can, at our next meeting, we can, we can agree to the seventeen thousand dollar reduction. If you do something else by, before our next meeting, you can get that taken off too, right? As long as you get it inspected, and we get a letter from Graves saying it's done, we're, we're good.
If I do give a check to, um, Bill tonight, I, I give him a check, and he waits till we have confirmation from Jeff that the berm is done tomorrow. Um, I don't think there's anything in that, but again, I don't have a problem giving a check for the one twenty-three.
So you want, you want, what you want us to know is if Bill can hold the check for, for twenty-four hours before he gives it into the town.
Right.
And then you're gonna void the check for one twenty-three and write a new one for one seventy?
I can build houses like that, so, again, or, or whatever. If I have to do the one twenty-three, that's fine.
We can't, we can't put that on the town planner and make it his responsibility.
No.
No, no, no. I, I, I just want the lots to release, okay, and then I've already checked.
Tony, if you want the lots released tonight, easiest way is to write the check for one twenty-six, and then if you.
One twenty-three.
One twenty-three.
I see, it got cheaper already.
Yeah, all right, three thousand less.
It's already going down.
Yeah.
Special fire sale. No, uh, write the check for one twenty-three, and then we can, we can sort out the, uh, the berms, you know, at the next meeting, if we get a letter back from our, our engineer, because we're gonna, we're gonna have another meeting in, it'll, it'll actually be in.
Thirteenth of July.
Yeah, so is that, is that three weeks away, or four weeks away?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah, three weeks, right.
Three weeks. So in three weeks, we'd have another meeting. We could, we could, we could, we could.
I know. Yeah, it's just that downstairs.
I know, I'm just, I'm just.
All right, yeah, I'll do it for one twenty-three, and that's fine.
All right, so you're gonna, you're gonna give us a check for one twenty-three, so then obviously you want us to vote tonight through, give you the nine lot releases? Do you need them all, or do you want?
All the lots.
Okay.
He can get all nine, because he's providing security for all nine.
He's meant the securities, right?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have, um, do we have a document that's, uh, for those lot releases?
I do. Need signatures on one, but that's the point.
But maybe somebody could use that to make a motion? So are the lots called out on there?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, so before you sign it, um, Mr. Chinaki, would you want to make the motion, or?
Make a motion to release lots seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, forty-three R, forty-four R, forty-five R, forty-six R.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? You can sign it now, Mr. Chinaki?
We have one copy of this, Phil?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
So there's, uh, no notarization at the bottom of that form? So if one of the members would like to come in and see the town clerk tomorrow to, to have it notarized, we could do that? Or any, or any day, but.
Yeah, tomorrow might not be able to, if it's.
Tomorrow's Thursday?
You leave it downstairs?
Yeah, I can do it in the morning, as long as, as long as it's real early.
Okay.
I got an appointment at nine-thirty, but before that, I could come in.
Okay.
Town clerk opens at eight.
Can you bring it down in the morning?
Okay, so two will bring it down to the town clerk's office, and you can see in the bottom, it says the, you know, planning board member written below, uh, and you'd be, he would be that person.
If you can't do that, I could probably get in sometime afternoon, late morning.
No, I got tomorrow off, so I can do it in the morning. I'll just have a meeting at nine-thirty, and you'll decide if I'm.
All right. Done deal.
So it sounds like you're all set, Tony. We'll get it, we'll get it notarized in the morning for you.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Bill, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you.
Not to sign my name on this thing over here?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Anything else to discuss on, um, these other subdivisions, Phil, or?
While, while Tony's here, do you have any questions about Pierpon?
By the way, it looks beautiful.
I took a ride up there, yeah. It was, it was the first, I made the maiden voyage all the way around the loop. It was, uh.
Yeah.
Quite prestigious. People are gonna have a good view when they come out of their park, out of their driveway, Tony, and come down the hill, you know, and get the light there and everything.
Yeah.
It's a speedy ramp right now.
Scenic view. Yeah, raise the prices now.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, we do have a site inspection report from Graves Engineering on Lion's Estates.
Okay. Same tab, because it's new.
Tab, E, I believe. Yes, right after that Pierpon Estates letter
Yep.
is the Graves report on Lion's Estates. So there's some issues with sediment, but generally, the road appears to be in goo- in good condition.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, um, developer had agreed to, uh, clean up the site. I haven't followed up on that, see whether that's been done, but
Okay.
it appears to be in good condition.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
Gotta go back to work.
Yep. You gonna retire now, or is this, uh?
Can't retire yet.
It's got many houses to build.
I'm only seventy-five.
Hey, Tony, before you go, so this form is gonna be notarized tomorrow.
Okay.
You'll need to get that recorded at the registry of deeds, so you'll need to pick that up from the town clerk.
Anytime, like in the afternoon?
Right, guy's gonna sign it in the morning.
Yeah.
She'll, you know, stamp it, and then you can get that recorded.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Looks like, uh, we also have a report from, um, Legacy Landing?
We do. And again, that was, uh, from Graves Engineering. There appears to be, you know, again, issues with sediment, but doesn't appear to be any, any sediment, uh, running off-site, or there's no issues with drainage. It's just more not being contained properly onsite.
Mm-hmm.
If you would like, I could have. If you would like, I could have, um, highway superintendent go out and verify that, that the work has been cleaned up.
Yep.
Just to make sure that, uh, there's follow-up to this report.
On both, on both of those?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be good. 'Cause when, when, when we started business, they weren't today. They were once June seventh. One is... Yeah, they were both on the seventh, so... And then we also have another one here from June seventh on the Oxford Ave-Sola.
Again, you know, just routine kinds of, uh, issues. Nothing significant for that one either. So, I think that, uh, I could have Jeff take a look at that as well.
Okay. Okay, so that'll take care of all the Graves reports, and if we can get confirmation from the highway superintendent, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
How about, uh, we had Eisenhower was, I believe, a question that was raised at the last meeting.
Yeah, I need, I need to make a phone call. I haven't, I haven't got that far yet, sorry.
All right, no problem.
But I will, I will try to get it done this week, see if I can get, get in touch with Mr. Heaney and see what his intentions are. I mean, in the past, he's taken my calls, so I'll try to see what he says.
Yeah.
And so I think we also covered Legacy Landing and the Solar was, was part of number two, so I think we're all set with number two also.
Mm-hmm.
That gets us onto the back page. Number three, planner's plate. Anything from...
Couple of things. Um, on July twenty-fifth, uh, town council Jeff Blake is coming to the selectmen's meeting. Uh, it's kind of an open forum for anybody to come and ask town council questions about any matters, um, any legal issues before the town. So...
July twenty-fifth?
Yes, it's a Monday evening. So, I know the planning board has had, you know, questions in the past about their subdivision matters or issues regarding the bedament process, um, street acceptance process, things of that sort. So, it's not particularly a joint meeting of the planning board, but, so you won't have to open and, and conduct business, but I can post it for you in case a couple of members want to attend.
Yeah.
And then, you know, certainly encourage you to come and have your questions answered by, by council at that time.
Okay, I, I will.
Now, if four or more of us, or three or more of us were to attend the meeting, that would constitute a meeting of our planning board then.
Yes.
We would have to post an agenda.
I will post it, right, yeah. I did that last time.
Yeah.
Just then.
That's fine. I think, I think it's worthwhile to do it just because if three or more people show up, we need it.
We should be covered.
Yeah. And, and really, the, the agenda would just be what, I mean, it's, if it's an open forum, we can't really have an agenda. We don't know what the questions are gonna be asked, so...
And you wouldn't be conducting any business. You'd just be in attendance to...
It's a meeting of record, that's...
Yes. Uh, secondly, uh, the Partridge Hill project, uh, paving took place this week, so that's moving along very quickly.
Uh, if I just interrupt, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I've spoken to one of the residents up there. He was very happy with what's been done.
Oh, good.
Spoke very highly of Amarillo and the job that they'd done, so at least we have one happy resident of Partridge Hill.
I spoke to two others, and they're very happy also.
Oh, okay, it's contagious then.
One said she was offered to, to, to run some of the equipment. I don't know if it was a dream come true or not, but...
Oh, maybe.
Yeah.
It's, it's good to see some of, one of these things moving, if you will, finally.
So, the next, the next step would be to have an engineer or surveyor do the asphalt and street acceptance plans, and then we can get that on the docket for acceptance in the, in the fall time.
Now, just a question, Bill. If, if Mr. Heaney was, was applicable to finish up Eisenhower Drive, he could also apply in the fall, correct? If he had everything done?
Yes.
Okay, so that's something I just wanna let him know. That's not, he doesn't have to wait till next January.
Correct.
Okay.
Good thought.
And the fall is in Oc- our, our fall meeting is usually in October, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then just, uh, for anybody who might be, uh, watching at home, um, Nichols College has submitted a site plan application for townhomes. Uh, we'll be having the public hearing on that at the next meeting on July thirteenth.
Right.
Um, I've brought the plans around to town departments, looking for comments. I don't have anything back yet. So, that'll be on the agenda if anybody wants to attend and to offer comments on that. Um, I think that hearing opens at seven fifteen.
And you, I'm, I'm sorry, but you just said it's, it's a special permit or is a site plan?
It's a site plan approval.
Site plan approval, okay. And is it major or minor?
Uh, major.
Okay, 'cause it's more square footage or parking's...
Parking, correct, yep.
Okay.
So, that's it for planner's plate?
All right. Um, after planner's plate, we got comments from the planning board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, the word parking just came up in conversation and discussion. Uh, I remember, uh, the folks down at Chase Mill, uh, when they presenting, I, I think Mr. Wetrobra actually raised a question about the parking at the time, and I don't wanna quote you specifically, but I think it was in regards to, was there sufficient parking or something to that effect? And I believe the comment from the, uh, the folks applying was that their customers typically bought their product and left very quickly. Uh, again, I don't have the specific wording. I'm sure it's in the record somewhere. Back to the video. I was really surprised to find in the Smart Sharper today that they are planning a grand opening with live music, swag, and other goods, local vendors, food trucks. I'm not sure how that fits into the people buying product and leaving quickly.
Well, when a selectman approved it, I watched that meeting.
The, the selectman did approve that.
Yeah.
And what meeting was that? I went back and tried to find it on the agenda.
Steve was there and didn't voice any concerns about it, so as far as I'm concerned, until, until it proves to be a problem, I guess it's not a problem.
Well, I, I, I know that they come back before us annually, as I understand it. I, I think there might be a reason for questioning what their intent was or whether this was an error of omission, uh, when they presented before us.
We'll probably have to wait and see what happens, Richard. I, I guess, you know, if it ends up being a real debacle and a real problem down there, then probably they'll hear enough complaints that the next time...
First and last.
Well, I, I, I'm not predicting any debacle certainly, but it is, uh, probably a first experience of this sort in the town of Dudley for the numbers that I suspect will probably be in attendance.
See the guy with the sign? They got a guy down at the corner of Chase Ave and Main Street, one of them, arrow signs, and he does this, you know, whipping it around and everything.
Like the Sandwich Board thing or, yeah, okay. Well, um, more power to them.
No, that's Sandwich Board, the live guy who is...
Oh, I don't doubt it. You know, like Liberty, well, well, some of the tax companies put those guys out there too. Uh, it could be interesting to see what the outcome is on this, uh, event. I did, not sure. There's a lot across the street that's been cleared to some extent. Is that their property too, do we know?
I don't know. I don't think so.
I'm just curious as to what happened there. It looked like a...
Did they, did they need to get a special permit from the board of selectmen to hold this?
Yeah.
Just an event permit?
An event permit.
Right.
And that was already cleared?
Yep.
I don't have any information, but Steve said it was, so...
I saw it. I gave them the board of selectmen, so they wanna do this, and they explained it. They said, I believe they're gonna have two DJs and, uh, one food truck or something like that, I don't remember exactly, but they spelled it out pretty clearly what they intend to do down there.
It, it works at Indian Ranch.
Well, okay. To some extent, there's some disruption in terms of traffic certainly.
No consumption of product at, at the, at the event.
Really?
They stressed...
Okay. Uh, I hope someone can, uh, read my sarcasm as I'm approaching the microphone.
Well, I think that they're actually gonna crack down and make sure of that, because that's, that, that could cost them the license, and I think they know that. So, that'd be, that'd be awfully risky of them to have.
What, what, uh, selectmen's meeting was that? Do you recall the date by chance? I tried to go back and couldn't find it.
It's all fog to me.
Okay, well, there'd be probably fog enough on the twenty-fifth. Uh, no pun intended. Interesting development. That's all I will say with that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I don't think we're gonna have any comments from the audience, so we can skip down to, uh, the next meeting date. I think we already stated it was gonna be July thirteenth at seven P.M. Um, and you said that we would have the public hearing at seven fifteen?
Yes.
Okay. That's under other business. Next one down from that. Number two, approval of consultant vouchers, payments of bills. We have one for V A I Stevens Traffic Peer Review, five hundred one dollars and fifty-four cents. And we have another one, I believe, is that for the same...
It's on the cent, yeah, it's a past due.
Same vendor for twenty-eight hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-three cents. Would somebody like to make a motion for those, um...
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we pay both bills as presented, uh... For, you need the amount specifically, five hundred one dollars and fifty-four cents, and I'm searching for the other number.
Twenty-eight eighty-five forty-three.
Twenty-eight thirty-five forty-three as well.
Eighty-five forty-three.
Eighty-five forty-three, as amended.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know we're going back a bit, but I, I would like to, uh, offer my congratulations to both yourself and Mr. Wetrobra on successful election campaigns and to, uh, our member-to-be, uh, Mr. Jürgen and his successful right-hand campaign.
That's good. All right, any other town notices, Bill?
No.
Okay, and no other correspondence?
Yep.
That brings us down to adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Good night. Bless the need of God.